Testing one, two, three. This will be the February 21st, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, February 21st, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence and a pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We had a proclamation. I don't see it here, so we'll mail it or something on that one. At this time, I'll open the floor for citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. The floor is open for non-agenda items. Here are none. Close it. Back to the City Council, comments?
All I have to add is, I wish I would have been here for the open house of Sampson's Island, but I did make it through the workday weekend before, only a few bangs, bruises, and scars from being out there. Someone I'll leave nameless is quite the crew chief out there to make sure that we work hard. But out of all that, I heard it went well, and I was glad to hear it.
Great. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Just did the locals-only surf contest. Was very, very well attended, I thought. I got to go on the Saturday for the girls. So it was, I feel like your kids, I couldn't find you though. It's a pretty cool thing that we live in such a beautiful place that we can have something like this happen, and some very amazing young surfers that are very local to us. And just wanted to say how unfortunate I feel for the events that happened down in South Florida. And it's very, very sad, and my heart goes out to their families. And that's it.
I attended the Space Coast League of Cities meeting on February 12th, and went with Courtney on Monday to the CRC Constitution Revision Committee meeting that was held in Melbourne at the King Center. And it was a pretty interesting meeting. There were several hundred people in attendance, and a lot of different topics came up. And it was interesting that the, probably the most highly talked issue was greyhound dogs in the whole event. There were at least 100 people that spoke about greyhound dogs. And it's kind of like pregnant pigs in our constitution. And now we'll have greyhound dogs if that happens. But it was interesting to listen to the comments across the board. We spoke on home rule, two different proposals that were going through the CRC. And we asked that one of them that got voted down not come back to the full committee, because it definitely was detrimental to cities. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Couple of, March 2nd is, I believe, the ribbon-tied ceremony for the new track. And I got a call from Mark Elliott a couple of days ago. Has Mark contacted you, Courtney? Or, you know, Mark contacted the police department? He read off a list of events that are going to happen over the next month there that are amazing. But to amazing, too, that he said he expected about 5,000 people to one of them. It's going to be one of the regional track needs. So I'm not sure if, you know, the police department was aware of it. I was kind of shocked when he told me in this period of time how that track was going to be used over the next month and a half. So just to let you know, and maybe to contact him and get a feeling of what's going on.
If that's the case, we ought to have, that information should be on our website. I mean, if there's stuff like that going on in our city, you know, there's probably people that would probably want to go.
I mean, it's, there's the district, there's the regional, I mean, there's quite a lot of activity that's going to occur on that tractor. And I can tell you, he's, I know that Australia is pretty proud of it, he should be, but, you know, so I'm going to go to the opening.
For that many people, they'll probably be parking in some of our facilities, too. So I'll call and make sure that we coordinate that. And then we can put that on Facebook. And we should be really proud of what we did, I think. I mean, they wouldn't have gotten that far without our contribution and our participation. So we need to let people know about that. And they do have a nice sign that shows the contributors, if you saw that. I thought that was nice.
Yep. Thank you. I have no further comment. We'll move on to City Attorney's Report. I have nothing. Thank you. Moving on to City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Okay. And to add on to the CRC, the Constitutional Revision Committee, that was an eight-hour public hearing. And there was not one person that spoke in favor of limiting home rule. There was not one person that spoke in favor of any of the proposals that would limit the state's ability to tax. They never, nobody spoke against or spoke for any of the proposals that we are opposing. So I think that shows that the people that are pushing that are lobbyists that don't have to come to these meetings like we do, which is unfortunate. But the, those, the state tax proposal, I hear, we heard that some of the committee members were going to bring that back to the, to the full committee or to the full commission. And then also the proposal limiting regulation, our ability to regulate businesses was being proposed to come back. So we are, we are there to oppose that and ask the CRC to obey their own rules, and if it was defeated in committee, to let it stay that way. On a brighter note, the Second Annual Delora Dash will be held this weekend, and the PTO will be raising funds for digital, a digital marquee with this event, so that's their goal. And their goal is, where their registration for students and faculty is $25 or $30 on race day. And you can register at Running Zones, or, I'm sorry, UpAndRunningRaceManagement.com. And we did receive two different emails from two different people about the maintenance of Sampson Island and how nice it is that we provide that type of facility to our residents. And we found, we received a revision to the Silver Island Local Infrastructure Sales Tax, which I signed on February 2nd, and that's just the amendment that everybody agreed to with the new language on population. And we received a copy of an article on February 8th, 2018, Melbourne Beachside publication, which is a story highlighting our Satellite Beach Police Department and thanking Chief Pearson, Sergeant Owens, and all the staff for their professionalism, which I thought was a great article. I love opening the newspaper and seeing that. That's appreciated. We did receive a letter from Allen Norton &amp; Blue requesting a rate increase of $15 an hour effective March 1st, 2018. So we would need you to approve that rate increase. That's a typical rate increase we get from all of our attorneys every other year. So that brings them up to, that actually brings their increase to $15 an hour.
Since it's an action item, a discussion from a council. Monica?
And just so you know, Allen Norton &amp; Blue, that's our labor attorney firm, so they do all of our union negotiations. We actually don't use them very often, but we will this year because of, this is the ending of the last three-year union negotiation agreement, so we'll be entering those negotiations the next couple of months.
And this is in line with Bell's.
Yeah. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Allen Norton &amp; Blue requesting a rate increase of $15 per hour.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. At this time, because it's an action item, I'll open up for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Any further council comment? Eleanor?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Osburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Courtney?
And then this city is requesting permission to apply for a new ATV grant for the police department for a $12,000 to $18,000 amount from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. That's a no-match grant, so we're just requesting permission to apply for that.
Thank you. Council, comment?
Motion?
Please.
Motion to approve purchase of a new ATV for the police department for $12,000 to $18,000 from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osburn. One discussion, we have one for the fire department, and now we're going to have one for the police. Is that?
Police have one now.
Yeah, the police have one now.
It just doesn't run anymore.
Just replacing, yeah, we're trying to replace it.
Just making sure. And the fire department has one, correct? At this time, it is an action item. I'll open up for public comment. Here are none. Back to council. Any further council comments? Eleanor?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Courtney, any further? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Discuss, take action on ordinance number 1154. And also at your, that's up here, is an addition correction to portion of it, okay? Jim?
Ordinance number 1154. In ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, regarding communication facilities and public rights of way, creating a new Article 4, Chapter 62 Satellite Beach Code of Ordinances to be entitled Communication Facilities and Public Rights of Way, providing findings and intent, providing definitions, providing for registration of communication services providers, providing rules and regulations for communication services providers, wireless service providers, and small wireless services providers and their facilities, providing duty to notify, providing for revocation, suspension, and termination, providing appeals process, providing for insurance and identification, providing for construction bond, providing for abandonment, providing for pass-through provider fees for use of city utility poles, providing for reservation of rights and remedies, repealing Article 3, Chapter 62 Satellite Beach Code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date as the first reading of ordinance number 1154.
Thank you. I was going to say this, if you don't believe in home rule, here's a great one to read and believe in it. I don't think I've ever gone through an ordinance and had so many lines that I marked that I thought were things that were wrong and come to find out. I have no ability to change it in any way. I don't know. I find it very interesting. I had a lot of questions on the size of these pieces that could be on top of a pole, you know, hurricane, you know, I mean, just where is right-of-way? You know, is it going to be placed in the middle of someone's front yard or on the curb? Very interesting. But-
This was the 5G.
Yeah. And as I went in and spoke with Courtney, I know she was tired of me. She went through all the pages, but-
She's not alone in that.
I don't get it. Just on some of her.
I don't know. It's, all I got to say, it's amazing. And I hope one goes into Brymer's yard and not mine. Anyway, that's all I have to say on it. It's pretty amazing. Courtney, any?
I would just let Jim kind of go through some of the-
Well, Mayor, members of the council, if you thought it was bothersome to you, those of us that worked with it, it was really bothersome as well. And anything that's in this, the legislature, of course, in their 2017 session, passed the Advanced Wireless Infrastructure Deployment Act. That should give you a hint of what's coming up from that. And that placed a lot of restrictions in terms of the broadcast or wireless facility infrastructure, and those are the ones that would be placed in the right-of-way. And so that's what this chapter and Mr. Beadle and I worked in terms of actually replacing this section in Chapter 62 with this. We tried our best. My staff memo, the last paragraph kind of tells the frustration. In conclusion, the city attorney, city staff, I believe, these new regulations governing telecommunications infrastructure best serve the city by including what limited regulatory control the city can exercise within these areas. We do have some restrictions in terms of the stealth color and contacts that we put in. They cannot have commercial advertising. We tried to put everything that we could in terms of things to give protection. If somebody has an act of abandoning, not keeping up the registration appropriately, we can, we can exercise that. We've got several pieces in this that, the limited control that we think we can't have. The rest of the things that you probably are going, oh, no, are things that we have to have, because that's the way it is. You have 60 days to approve application for a permit. If you don't let them know something's wrong with the application within 14 days, you can't say anything more than that. And so there's limitations. But we tried every which way we could to put in sections that would be appropriate for a design and even the spacing parts. The new legislation doesn't allow you to have exact spacing. You have to almost negotiate with them if it's not to your liking in terms of being too close. Mr. Beadle, I probably left some things out, but I think we tried to do the best we could with what we had.
They added, as much as they, you know, that we could, that didn't conflict with the statute. So the statute, very limiting for us. That's why the League of Cities and us lobbying so hard against it. But, on the other side, though, is there's, you know, when the cellphone industry is trying to implement 5G, you know, they're running into those permitting problems with each individual city and having, when you have to put in a pole every 200-something feet or a piece of infrastructure every 200-something feet to get that network off the ground, that's, that's what their complaint was. And I think it just went a little too far, but this is what we have to work with now.
So Jim, you feel this is as restrictive as we can make it as a city, given what the state has?
Yes.
Okay.
Both Jims say yes.
Appreciate it. Again, I, it was, I read it, and I would have had a lot of questions.
The mayor had a temper tantrum in my office.
Well, you know, when we, when we went to those, to those meetings over there, and I know in the transportation meeting group that I was in, and they, they told us that, you know, like AT&amp;T alone had 72 lobbyists there, just from AT&amp;T, not counting Verizon, not counting Sprint and everybody else, but just AT&amp;T had 72 full-time lobbyists, and their sole purpose in life was basically assign one to every congressional member up there to push for this. And that's why they, that's why they're successful in a lot of things, because they do, they go way, way above and spend a lot of money to make this happen. I was kind of shocked when they said, yeah, there's 72 lobbyists just from AT&amp;T, and that was just for a couple of their items they were trying to get through.
The worst part about this, in my opinion, is the inability for us to charge a franchise fee and have a franchise agreement similar to what every other utility has to do. So they got around that, which opens the door for the other utilities to have the same. And that's very, that's very concerning, because the taxpayers pay for those right-of-ways, they pay for the maintenance. And I would say, I would say a good half of the use of those right-of-ways are utility companies and, you know, so they pay us to, for that, for us to maintain them. And now this particular utility group gets to use those right-of-ways with no cost to us at all. They're no cost to them.
Yeah. This was the fight, I mean, for, you know, for our residents, I know that this, you know, people are watching this, there's not a lot of people here, but, you know, we went to Tallahassee last year, and we fought this because, you know, exactly what Courtney's talking about. Our rights of ways are our rights of ways, and we are now being put in a situation where things are being put there with no financial gain to our city, and basically, our taxpayers are paying for this. And I just showed the mayor, I saw this on the news today, the first 12 cities getting AT&amp;T's mobile 5G. It's already started, in Dallas and Atlanta and Waco, Texas. So it's coming. But this is, this is another, you know, avenue where the legislature's impaired us to operate locally on what's best for our residents.
I think one of my big concerns, if you see, go online, and you look at the size of some of these boxes, and you're going to put that on top of the pole. If you look at the poles in our city, 87 of them aren't very straight. And so my big concern is, you plop this on, and hurricanes come.
Big sale.
Big sale. And when you see the size of them, and I guess my big thing to Courtney was, right-of-way, where is that? Where is that to people's houses? Some people in certain neighborhoods have underground power. They bought there so they didn't have to have poles and so forth in the yard. And, you know, you could have one of these big boxes stuck in the front of your yard. So, and I don't know the answer, but it's very interesting. So, for the comment from-
Reluctantly, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1154.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item Eight. Here are none. Back to council. Any further council? Eleanor?
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I just, we want to go back real quick to the ATV purchase, because the, purchase, the application to the grant, because the motion was to purchase, and it should have been to apply for a grant to purchase. I want to make sure that we correct that, because that might affect-
Mark made the motion. You seconded it.
I'll amend my motion.
Did I second that one?
You did.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Osburn?
I'll amend my second.
Thank you.
Any or any revote?
I would say yes.
Please.
Mayor, did you- Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
I did.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
And you took public comment on the wireless?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm done correcting.
We need somebody to watch out for us.
Moving on to Agenda Item Nine. Discuss, take action on amendment to task order for Rochelle Alondales' agreement. Courtney?
Mayor, we're just requesting a task order extension for this contract. There's no money assigned to this at this time. In fact, I don't think Ms. Alondales has filled us for anything so far, so, but we're, our climate ambassador work is extending out, so we want to extend her contract out. That's it.
If you haven't been to one of those meetings, I would recommend you drop in. It's very interesting. There's a lot of great information being passed around and discussed, and I think it's, we as a city and our city manager made this available to the citizens. And it's up to, you know, we've done a lot to get it out there, but we really need, you know, people are willing to come. It's very interesting, and it's a lot of great, you know, information going back and forth. So Rochelle does a great job.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, Rochelle, her knowledge is, and her perspective, the way she comes into it, is she's very pragmatic, and she's very resourceful, and she's, and she's been of a big benefit to us, so.
I think her and our city manager together, working on this stuff, we're going to get some good information out of this real good.
And Rochelle was just invited to be in, I guess, inducted into, as a fellow in the APA, the American Planning Association, which is a pretty big honor. Yeah, it's a big honor among nerdy professional planner people. So she's going to get that at the National APA Conference coming up, so it's a pretty big deal.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign an amendment to Task Order A of the Continuing Professional Service Contract for Resiliency and Sustainability Planning Services with Rochelle Alondales.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Here are none. Back to council. Any further? Eleanor?
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten. Discuss, take action on agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant for Stormwater Education.
Thank you, Mayor. We applied for and received a 319H grant from DEP for non-point source education projects in our adopted basic management plan. And basically, as part of this, we will be conducting outreach to describe how stormwater non-point source pollution affects seagrass and lagoon health. And that will include videos and other workshops and things like that. So we're asking for your approval of the agreement tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the 319 grant application for non-point source education projects in adopted basic management action plan areas.
Motion by Councilman Osburn, second by Councilman Brymer. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Ten. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Any further? Eleanor?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osburn?
Yes.
Mayor Catanas?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11. Discuss, take action on Exhibit A to the Florida Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Management and Compensation Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we sign this agreement every year, and so we're requesting your authorization to allow me to sign this agreement. This agreement basically provides a $49 increase from the total 22,512, or for a total of $22,512. And this is what we will receive to maintain the signals in the city.
Motion to authorize the city manager to sign the Florida Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement for fiscal year 1718 and fiscal year 1819.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion, this probably includes the cost of who paid for the other traffic signals, too?
That question is still ongoing. But I will find the answer to that question.
Sorry, I had to bring it up. At this time, any further council comments?
I don't have any comments on, while we're talking about the, you know, this, when are they going to start working back on A1A again? Our medians look terrible.
That's the other question that we've posed them to numerous times, because we get complaints on that daily.
I, yeah.
Not only the signals are confusing to people, because both of them are still there, but only one's working. They're not timed yet, so it's very frustrating to people. The medians are really messy looking. People are driving through them. I've seen tire tracks in them. So we do have a staging area that we're shutting down, largely because it's terrible inconvenience to the neighbors, but also because they don't seem to be going anywhere in terms of timeline. And so we're hoping that will push them along a little bit. But it is, that's the one at the old bowling alley site. So we're asking, we're sending that to code enforcement because of that reason.
I do have one quick question, too. Why did they, one of the turning lane ones, why are they such bold corners? You know, usually there's kind of like a step up, there used to be where if you accidentally hit the curb, you didn't take your tire out. Now they have these big straight box corners on them. I'm hearing lots of people just not being happy, and by sunrise, people are hitting that curb because they can't see it when they don't know it's there, and it's just-
Because the street hasn't been painted yet, and the curbs haven't been painted yet, and they haven't been planted yet. So the, so nobody sees them at night, you know? And we've asked for barrels to be put out there several times, so it's been an ongoing discussion with them, and we're, they definitely know we're not happy.
I sent some photos to Courtney from Cocoa, from the north end of US 1 by a 528. They're all painted, and your perception of them is totally different than your perception here. So as we talk, I hope, you know, you paint, but you look at their curves, too. Ours are curved until you get up to the point where you turn, and then they're square.
Right.
But Cocoa, and that project only took like 10 or 12 years, but it did come out pretty good. I mean, it looks really nice up there, so.
Well, excuse me. The only thing I wanted to say was, we have been, we have an ongoing dialogue with DOT regarding the status of the signals. And we received an email back from them today that they were going to start changing over the signals intersection by intersection. More information to come. So this is what we're getting out of the consultant for DOT. You know, the construction folks, they don't know any more than we do. I send Robert to the meetings, and he asks the questions, and he gets the same answer
We do have the motion and second. Further discussion from council? Lenard?
Public comment, you didn't take yet.
Thank you. Public comment on Agenda Item 11, the floor is open. Here are none, back to council. Thank you, Lenard, appreciate it. Any further? Lenard?
I'll, I'll make sure that we got the ladder on that, just to make sure.
Yeah, I just think it's kind of time that everybody, I mean, it's come to a grind and, I mean, they were doing fabulous and then it came to a grind and haul.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Lenard?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Senator Kaden?
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, discuss take action on agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection grant for stormwater education.
Thank you, Mayor. We applied for and received a 319H grant from DEP for non-point source education projects in our adopted basin management plan. And basically, as part of this, we will be conducting outreach to describe how stormwater non-point source pollution affects seagrass and lagoon health. And that will include videos and, and other workshops and things like that. So we're asking for your approval of the agreement tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, counsel comments?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the 319 grant application for non-point source education projects in adopted basin management action plan areas.
Sir.
The motion by Councilman Osmer, seconded by Councilman Brymer. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10. Hearing none, bring it back to council, any further? Lenard?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Senator Kaden?
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, discuss take action on Exhibit A to the Florida Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Management and Compensation Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we sign this agreement every year, and so we're requesting your authorization to allow me to sign this agreement. This agreement basically provides a $49 increase from the total 22,500, or for a total of $22,512. And this is what we will receive to maintain the signals in the city.
Motion to authorize the city manager to sign the Florida Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement for fiscal year 1718 and fiscal year 1819.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brymer, seconded by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion, this probably includes the cost of who paid for the other traffic signals too?
That question is still ongoing.
Thank you.
But I will find the answer to that question.
Sorry, I had to bring it up. At this time, any further counsel comments?
I don't have any comments on, while we're talking about the, you know, this, when are, when are they going to start working back on A1A again? Our medians look terrible.
That's the other question that we've posed them to numerous times, because we get complaints on that daily.
I, yeah.
Not only the signals are confusing to people, because both of them are still there, but only one's working. They're not timed yet, so it's very frustrating to people. The medians are really messy looking, people are driving through them, I see entire tracks in them. So we do have a staging area that we're shutting down, largely because it's terrible inconvenience to the neighbors, but also because they don't seem to be going anywhere in terms of timeline. And so we're hoping that will push them along a little bit. But it is, that's the one at the old bowling alley site.
Yeah.
So we're asking, we're sending that to code enforcement because of that reason.
I do have one quick question too. Why did they, one of the turning lane ones, why are they such bold corners? You know, usually there's kind of like a step up, there used to be where if you accidentally hit the curb, you didn't take your tire out. Now they have these big straight box corners on them. I'm hearing lots of people just not being happy and by sunrise, people are hitting that curb because they can't see it when they don't know it's there and it's just.
Because the, the, the street hasn't been painted yet and the, and the curbs haven't been painted yet and the, and they haven't been planted yet. So the, so nobody sees them at night, you know, and we've asked for barrels to be put out there several times. So it's been an ongoing discussion with them and we're, we, they definitely know we're not happy.
I sent some photos to Courtney from Cocoa, from the north end of US 1 by a 528. They're all painted and your perception of them is totally different than your perception here. So as we talk, I hope, you know, you paint, but you look at their curves too, and ours are curved until you get up to the point where you turn and then they're square.
Right.
But Cocoa, and that project only took like 10 or 12 years, but it, it did come out pretty good. I mean, it, it looks really nice up there, so.
Well, excuse me. The only thing I wanted to say was, we have been, we have an ongoing dialogue with DOT regarding the status of the signals. And we received a email back from them today that they were going to start changing over the signals intersection by intersection. More information to come. So this is what we're getting out of the consultant for DOT. You know, the, the construction folks, they don't know any more than we do. I send Robert to the meetings and he asks the questions and he gets the same answers that I get if I call or, or if the city manager calls over there. So they're not being very forthcoming with any information, you know.
I think, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about going up the ladder after next.
Let's finish this here. I'm starting to kind of twist it off a little bit. We do have the motion and second. Further discussion from council? Lenard?
Public comment, you didn't take yet.
Thank you. Public comment on Agenda Item 11, the floor is open. Here are none, back to council. Thank you, Lenard, appreciate it. Any further? Lenard?
I'll, I'll make sure that we got the ladder on that, just to make sure.
Yeah, I just think it's kind of time that everybody, I mean, it's come to a grind and, I mean, they were doing fabulous and then it came to a grind and haul.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Lenard?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Senator Kaden?
Yes, motion passes. At this time, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 12, Presentation of FY 1718 First Quarter Budget Report. There's no action here, this is just for information purposes only. Courtney, thank you.
Mayor, council members, bringing you the favorite part of the night, let's talk about where we stand with our budget. So after the first quarter, this is from October to the end of December, kind of just give you a rough rundown of how we're sitting, where we look at with everything with the general fund revenues, we've already received 86% of the ad valorem so far this year. We've got 59% of the total revenues that we anticipate to see for the rest of this fiscal year. And we have received $80,000 worth of FEMA money from per Hurricane Matthew. So we'll take that as a.
Yeah, I understand.
How much more are we anticipating?
The, for Hurricane Matthew is anticipated to be about $280,000 total, so we should see another $200,000 from them and then another 360 for Hurricane Irma. So, that's what's out there.
Does that money here, Mark, go in the reserves?
Unless you don't want them to.
No, well, that's where it came from, what we paid.
Absolutely.
And that's going to be some, again, we'll discuss it at a later date, but that's going to be something that could really run into a problem with us. If payback from FEMA on our budget every year gets extended out two or three years, you have to increase the amount of reserves you have to cover storm events. It's, you know.
Or cancel all future storms.
We could, we could.
Let's move on then.
Taking a look at overall general fund expenditures, you will see that I've done it by department, so you can kind of see how much of the percentage of each individual budget. And everyone at this point is kind of right on target at the end of the first quarter. Anticipate somewhere around 25% is where you need to be, so we're, we're good at the end of December. I do plan to see some amendments to be made after I do the second quarter, which will end in the end of March. We'll talk about some amendments that will need to be made and those will be brought to you probably in May to make those amendments. Like I said, currently we are on target and we hope to see additional revenues from FEMA from Hurricane Matthew. Every bit will help. Moving into our community service funds, the recycling fund has received 22% of their revenues and spent only 12% of their expenditures. The other funds are very small and we don't really do much, they're basically based on contributions that come in. So you will see that, you know, we've got some revenue in Sampson Island, beautification, the advanced life support, the community service fund and the recreation trust. All of those funds do have a fund balance in them as we go into each budget year, because they don't spend all their money. And like I said, it's all based upon revenue that is donations to them.
What do we spend on a dollar on for advanced life support?
I just circled that.
It would be probably most likely interest.
Okay.
Yeah, most likely it's interest. We do take that interest and divide it across those funds to, so that's what it ends up being. The stormwater fund, we've received 81% of the stormwater revenues and has been received, so it's $415,000. Just to make a mental note, the large amount of the revenue anticipated for stormwater is duly part to the grant that we've got for De Soto and NEP grant that is also for the De Soto project, and they do have corresponding expenses to go with those revenues. And we have spent so far 5% of the budget in expenditures for stormwater. The Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, we've received 98% of the revenues and these includes the transfers of the general fund that are required per the agreements that we have. So we went ahead and made those transfers through and the expenditures are at 609,000, which is 34% of the budget. And this also includes the transfers to the general fund that are required by the agreements. Capital Assets Fund, we've received 12% of the revenue and we've spent 46% of it. This is due to unforeseen and over budgeted projects that I have identified there. We had the air conditioner at the DRS Center, that was not something that was budgeted for. It was an emergency situation, we had to handle it. The football lights, they came in over budget. The solar panels have come in over budget. And then, of course, the Jackson property purchase was not something that we had put in the budget either, so those are kind of like the highlights of what's happening with the Capital Assets Fund. The Health Insurance Fund is currently at the end of the first quarter, revenues and expenditures are about equal, which is how this fund's supposed to operate. Bring the revenues in, we spend out the same amount of money, that's how it's supposed to stay balanced. So 25% of the revenues, 24% of the expenditures, okay with that fund. So quarter in review, we're still struggling obviously with revenues, trying to find the hurricane money from FEMA, which we're not for sure when that's actually going to happen. I know Suzanne has been on them, it seems like on a daily basis, trying to figure out when is it going to come, when can we anticipate it? As I've said, as the old adage goes, we should prepare for the worst and hope for the best. It's not something that we are going to probably budget for, to see this money coming in. It has been pretty well told to everyone who has had any kind of conversation with anyone with FEMA, there's been a lot of natural disasters, they don't have a lot of money, they're trying to do what they can, but not to budget for it. So that's kind of where we're at. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Counsel questions? Thank you very much. Courtney, the football lights being over was just a function of, and costing us a little more, did we make a change on that at all?
Everything's coming in higher because of construction value, you know, just construction costs are skyrocketing because everybody's busy, there's, people are spending money, the economy's goods, so the construction costs go up. Of course, when there's a recession, the construction costs go down and we have no money to build anything, so.
Any further questions before opening up for public comment from council? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 12.
Larry Whitney, Glenwood Avenue. I have, I, I couldn't hear very well, but I think you touched on it. One of the things that caught my attention was these budgeted amounts and actuals in capital assets funds. The, the football lights, they're off by 36% and the solar panels are off by, you know, a very large percentage. I'm trying to understand the budgeting process and how we anticipate what things are supposed to cost, because that's a significant difference.
Courtney, I think Courtney just answered a one on the football lights.
I, I couldn't hear that.
Okay, no problem. On the football lights, what they had budgeted was what we thought they would actually cost us, but the price went up because market's good and trying to find people to do the work. The second one, the solar panels, I think we made that change.
Okay, we made a change.
To have a little better panels and some other things that would be to our benefit.
Basically to prepare for, I don't know how to say it, solar people notice it better than I do. So basically to, to transfer over to a battery if we needed to at a later date.
Very, on, on that one, on the solar, I guess, because I actually had said that, that the way solar works now is when the power grid goes off, doesn't matter if you have solar, you're off. Well, in the future, batteries get good, solar, the lines go off, we can still have power without having to go to a generator and run off batteries. But the little, the transfer switch is slightly different and that costs more, a little bit more money. Please.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with any of those things. I just think in terms of financial planning, an explanation variance would be very helpful on the report. That's what I was getting to, to suggest that we budgeted 130 and it was 150 because we did X. That would be a much clearer explanation financially.
Okay, thank you. Floor is still open? Hearing none, further, back to council, any further questions? Staff, thank you very much. There's nothing to vote on on that, move on. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, discuss take action on award request for bid number 17/1801 for Civic Center renovations.
And before Suzanne starts on the specifics that we wanted to make sure you understood, we held off on this and then reconsidered that because we didn't want to lose this particular contractor. And the, the other reason is, even though we're going to be having some financial decisions to make down the road, we do have, a large portion of this project is plumbing and we're getting ready to go through sewer private line replacement program with our community and basically asking people to upgrade their drain pipes and provide incentives for them to do that. But at the same time, we have a facility here that was built in the 60s, we haven't touched the plumbing since it was built. So part of the reasoning of bringing it back to you is, you know, the, the improvements that we're making with this project are desperately needed because we have to maintain the, the facility and the plumbing underneath the ground, but also the, a lot, the other large portion of that is making these bathrooms ADA accessible, which currently they are not. So that's another issue, is that we're, we have a facility here that is primarily used by elderly residents and they don't, it current, doesn't comply with ADA accessibility at all. So we brought it back. Go ahead.
Yeah, and to, to add, but Courtney is, is describing scope of this particular renovation project for the Civic Center. We kind of call it a phase one because it's really for the southern half of the building. So it is the restrooms and it is also going to convert the current record storage room to another meeting space that can be rented out. So it's another, you know, revenue source there. Essentially, just to give you the brief overview of the, the bid process, we issued a request for bids back on November 13th. We had bids due in December 19th and we only received one response from a company called the Watauga Company. We wanted to try to get some more bids, so we reissued it to try to, you know, get some, something to compare it to. And out of that reissuance, we only got one more bid and Watauga bid again. So if it's, if the plumbing is the big part of that, then I say we got to fix that part. I said, and the ADA part I understand as compliance, but we can't, we cannot afford not to take care of a sewer problem in our community when it is within our control. Because we know most of these out here, we're not within our control.
And we have, just from the ADA perspective, we have users over there that have walkers and wheelchairs and they, that walk through this, over here to use this bathroom over here. Because they can't use that one over there. So when we started putting in the little openers, you know, that was after we met with a resident here that's in a wheelchair. And that meeting just makes you realize, you know, how hard it is for them to get around. So that kind of spurred us to make sure that we have these things in place. So, and that was where we started talking about, about that facility. And then we realized, you know, the age of these pipes. And Alan was right. He said the majority of that cost is going to be plumbing and he was, he was right.
Quick question on it. We vote on this, start time on this project? I mean, how were, we designed it? We have to go through design still?
No, it's.
No, we, it's only designed, yeah.
So start the project?
Depending on how quickly we get it on the street, you know, or how quickly we get the approval to the contractor, I could start, you know, I would say within thirty days if that's where we want to go.
Okay, thank you. Any further counsel before you open up for public? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item thirteen. Here are none.
I'll make a motion to award, approve award to request for bids for number seventeen eight dash eighteen oh one Civic Center renovation for Watauga Company.
Second. I have a motion by Council Vice Mayor, excuse me, Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer. Further discussion from council? Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Maricena?
Yes. Move on to Agenda Item fourteen. Discuss take action, including a referendum question on the November two thousand eighteen ballot regarding short-term rentals.
This is the item that we just briefly discussed about last meeting where Councilwoman Gibson and I talked about, when we're looking at short-term rentals, you know, what are some of the ways that we can, we can argue against this preemption? And one of those is getting a vote from our community. And so we began discussing that with Jim and talking about, you know, the possibility of including this issue on the ballot as a referendum, a local question. And we, I outlined here the obvious reasons that, you know, and I'm sure all of you are aware of the opposition to the short-term rentals. We believe our community is very much opposed to this issue, you know, to a preemption for short-term rentals. So what we would like to do is get your direction on that. And if you think that's an appropriate way to go, then we can ask our attorney to put, start putting that resolution together for your consideration. And I think, you know, we've already got somewhat of a draft and we just want to work on the language a little bit. We do, we are struggling with the issue of allowing owners to use, to rent out their home when they're out on vacation. And how do we do that? So we're, if we can find a solution to that problem, then we will bring that back to you and maybe in the form of two questions, but we'll, we'll work with the attorney if that's something you want to do and we'll, we'll bring that back to you for your consideration.
Question from council?
I mean, I, I see no harm in at least going forward and developing some language and at least looking into this. I mean, we'll always have the option later to decide, no, we don't want to put it out in a referendum, but I can't say no right now because I have nothing to look at to say no to at this point. So I would say, yes, we should go forward until we see something out there to actually look at.
Question. Jim, time from the standpoint of a November two thousand eighteen, how long? Or Lenore, what's our date?
August twentieth is the drop dead date to have the ballot done, so I would.
August twentieth?
You need to approve it by the, at least drop dead date of the August first meeting.
Okay. Then let me ask, throw one other question out.
That would be better.
If we put it on, then that must mean we care enough about the issue. What are we legally allowed to do to support or not on the referendum of this? Must we be quiet? Why I hired it.
Should have let Mark answer that question before. I mean, I'll, I'll come up with the parameters for it. There's, I haven't looked at it in a while. I don't know if the legislature's changed the rules, so to speak, on some of this stuff. So I, I mean, that issue had come up in the past, but I don't, I don't know exactly.
The only reason I'm saying is this, so that we know as we go forward, right, that we don't step on our feet going forward and cause an issue. Correct, that's all.
This, this is coming up, this vote is coming up tomorrow in the House. Whatever happens in this session, even if nothing happens, I can guarantee you this will come back next year. So, you know, whatever we can do, and I agree with Steve, we don't have anything to look at right now, but I think moving in this direction is going to be beneficial because it does two things. Number one, it puts us in a situation where we have something on a ballot, but it also enlightens our residents of the reality of what could be happening in their neighborhoods. And I think that's more important to me than the ordinance itself because people just aren't aware of what's happening in communities in our state.
And we have till basically the first part of August to make a decision.
And I think this makes a pretty bold statement to the state level people that, you know, if we get this on there, we mean business. And, and I'm interested to see what the community does say because I've, I've had some, you know, kind of mixed conversations. But I think the lack of knowledge of vacation rentals is what becomes confusing because everybody just assumes Airbnb. Well, it's innocent Airbnb isn't, you know, having to have that explanation that there are big corporate companies that buy up whole blocks and there's nothing to stop them once they're, once they're here, we can't stop them. And that's the biggest part is to do our own preemption towards them. So I just, I think that it's important to us that we, we really make a statement because listen to all these people speak at these committees the last two times we were up here and not one person, not one real person that was not a corporate entity was in support of it. Not one of them. And every time, the committees voted it through, that we sat through and that was very, it was very concerning to me and so.
Well, you know, the one other thing that I think people don't understand that Mindy mentioned is, you know, the Airbnb thing. We're not trying to prevent people, and, and you know, we've talked about possibly altering our ordinance to allow certain things, but we can't because we are a pre-two thousand eleven ordinance and it can't be touched. We can't do anything to change it, to accommodate certain people being able to do certain things. And that's part of what we want to educate our residents about. Because if a commercial vacation rental takes over a house, it's rented out twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. If I choose to rent my house out for three weeks because I'm going on vacation, that's an entirely different situation. Because I'm not a commercial establishment, I'm just renting out my house. Whether or not we want to allow that in our city is something our residents can decide, but for us to be able to do any changes at all, we lose our ordinance. And that's wrong. We should be able to locally make decisions on what's best for our community.
Thank you.
The, one thing I have, in the past, Courtney, what we have done, if it moves forward, ends up on the ballot, is as you know, we've done Beechcaster articles that covered this. So I just, in your head, if we're going in that direction, just kind of be thinking down the road. Because we've spent an entire issue on stormwater, whatever it happens to be, to educate everybody, not one way or the other, but just the facts.
You know, in my previous experience with charter amendments, that the, the local government can educate you on even the position of the local government, but you cannot tell somebody how to vote.
Right.
So you can't stand out on the side of the road and say, vote no, but you can tell them what, what the position of the local government is on that issue.
Can I just do one more thing, Frank? I just wanted to go just on, piggyback on what Dominic said. So you know, with the, being able to rent these houses out, to be able, so the current bill that's going through allows six people per bedroom, per house. So you have your average eighteen hundred square foot house, three bedrooms, you're looking at eighteen people in that house. And we brought this up in the past, the, it just, that's cars, that's part, it's just, there's not sewer, the burden on our infrastructure, it's just, there's nothing pretty. And then you have some bigger houses. Yeah, it's not a good situation. That's all.
Thank you. At this time, let me open up the Agenda Item for public comment. Floor is open. Here are none. Back to council, I have a motion.
Can I make a motion to provide direction to the city manager to prepare the necessary ordinances to place a question on the ballot regarding short-term rentals slash vacation rentals?
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Brymer. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Austin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Maricena?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item fifteen. Discuss take action on citizen engagement initiative and workshop timelines. Courtney?
Thank you, mayor. So as we were discussing, we have a scheduled presentation workshop, a special workshop, March eighth, that will be, will be presenting the financial forecast and budget issues that we're, will be encountering, especially considering the twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exemption that we are expecting to pass. And that will estimate, is an estimated six hundred thousand dollar reduction in Avalorham revenue. To help us through that, we're recommending that we create a citizen budget advisory committee. And this would be a five-member citizen committee that quite frankly will have a significant time commitment. And we would like to, if this is acceptable to council, we would like to have the charter or outline of what the budget advisory committee would do on your March seventh meeting and then at your, and then begin accepting applications immediately. And then you would appoint this committee at your March twenty-first meeting. This would, once selected, it is anticipated that the committee would meet biweekly and hear presentations from each department. We would discuss all of the funds with the advisory committee and see if they, you know, come up with any other recommendations, ideas. And we would basically be also seeking committee members who understand that there are many details to the budget, they'd be willing to put the time into it. We are recommending that we try to stay away from current board members largely because of the time commitment that's necessary for this type of work. But if that is something that you would like to do, that committee be, would be starting largely basically in April and, and moving into July or June, basically at the end of June. Three months, basically.
Question to you. When we discussed it, I liked the idea of getting a whole new faces there. Also, it's probably best that we don't have a liaison to it and probably not be there at those so that it's all fresh information.
Yeah, I was even, yes, I would recommend that because it is kind of intimidating. I was even talking about me not going to those meetings and having Suzanne. And so I would be doing the introduction and maybe there to answer questions, you know, if they asked me to come to the meeting. But even that, just to give them, you know, they're discussing the issues with each department head and so on. So we were, we were kind of going through, you know, wanting to make sure that they come up with their ideas and try to, you know, keep our, our influences out of that.
How, how are we going to in the short period of time? Do you have people that you're thinking about or are we just going to try to get people that quick?
Yep. We're putting it in the Beechcaster if this is something you want to do. So that will go out pretty soon. And then also put an advertisement on Facebook and, and our website and see if we can get some good applicants.
I think it's a great idea.
You have consensus to move forward? Is that all?
Yes, I'm going to open up for public comment. At this time, open up for public comment on this Agenda Item fifteen. Here are no further public, no public comment. Bring it back. Consensus?
I don't, I don't know where I, where you think we may be intimidating, but I certainly can see where having Courtney there could be intimidating for the general public, pets, anybody, you know. So I could understand it. So yes, certainly having.
I'll remember that.
Suzanne being there would, to me, would be a much calming atmosphere. I would get that.
Now, his head's getting bigger since he's got a few of those up and then problem out.
I'm just trying to say, she intimidates me, so I can understand, so.
Not enough for you to say that.
Okay, consensus from council?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Courtney?
Great. We'll get started on that.
Let me ask this too. Can we, not, not sure when you planned on doing this, but I know you and I talked on dates for workshops and community meetings and so forth?
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the next issue is we have stormwater coming down the line, right? So we have our stormwater plan underway. We're expecting the CIP part of that to be completed, hopefully by the end of March. At the same time, we were thinking, because we've had the water and the sewer line breaks and the concerns that have been expressed by the community, we have asked the City of Melbourne to participate in a workshop. And we will be asking, I haven't been able to nail down the sewer utility yet, but I'm sure they will be happy to participate. So we would like to have a utility workshop, an overall utility workshop. So we'd be having a brief presentation from the sewer and then City of Melbourne and then we would present stormwater. And I think that would give people a real good outline that there's three different entities that do this stuff, you know, these are the people that are responsible. And then what's the, what the best part about, a lot of it would be, there's this misconception that we have a water line problem and let them clear a lot of that up. And then, and then they also are getting ready to do line replacement soon. But also the sewer, because they're doing so much right now and you see a lot of the trucks out right now, let them present the results of that. And then we can also outline the new program by then. So we'll have that ready to roll out to the community. So that would be a good, a good workshop. And then we'll have, we'll be, we'll be prepared to talk about the stormwater. At that point, we have, will already have met with you to talk about stormwater, so you will already make those decisions so we can present them at this workshop. Okay?
Any indication on when?
Yes, I want you to reserve the three dates. April third.
Tell me you're not, tell me you're not intimidated.
April fifth and April eleventh. Because I need to get those to the utilities too. I would like the county manager.
We're doing this at like seven o'clock at night?
Yeah. We may do it a little earlier at six because it's such a long thing to do.
So it'll be one of these days or all three?
One of them. I'm just asking you to reserve them.
Okay.
And let me know if there's one that has to drop off. I need to give the utilities a couple, you know, events you cannot do.
What were those dates again?
Third, fifth and eleventh. Okay, take the fifth off already.
Take the fifth off?
Yeah, the mayor can.
I mean, I can not do that. I mean, if I don't want to be the, if you have four.
Okay. Then you're okay? Okay. All right. Okay, five and eleven.
I prefer, I mean, I, the fifth, I could get a sub, but I teach.
Okay, so we'll try not to do the fifth, but if we have to, then we'll let you know.
Third, fourth, and eighth.
Okay. I'd like the county manager to be there and I'd like the, our county commissioner to be there. So that's the pull. The utilities are easy. It's the elected officials, you, all of you guys. So we'll try to, to get that scheduled. We'll let you know. And that's good for you? Everybody's fine with that?
Yep.
That would be my best because we have visitors on the eleventh.
Okay. And then what we would like to do is after we know all of these things with stormwater, with the budget committee and their recommendations, and we have turned in a proposed budget to you and we have had our workshop, and everybody seems comfortable with the direction that we're going, then we would like to have the community meetings. Because then we have stormwater present, all the utility stuff to present, and a proposed budget and those issues ready to go. Because I think the overwhelming discussion will be the budget. Because it, we have a budget problem this year.
Can we talk about the short-term rentals?
Yes, and our referendum questions, you know. So we'll have a lot of things to talk about at that meeting.
I like that. You mean at the town hall meetings?
Yes.
Okay, I, we talked about the concern. I think we got to be real careful on how much information or how many subjects we talk about at those meetings. Because there's only going to be so much time and we've got to pick and use the ones that benefit the most to us. I just think.
We should have five. We have five people talking, we have five items. And when we give more than five, we can't do it.
Well, what I'm saying, some of these items. Well, what I'm saying, some of these items, referendum of why you're, that we, we might have to do some of these things through the committees that we have right now on, you know, future hikes on A1A and so forth, these subjects aren't going to be quickly done.
Not a five-minute thing, this is a particular...
It's not a five-minute present, A1A.
Well, let us, let us come back to you with the recommendation of how we organize those, because I think the traditional, what we've been doing with the five people presenting may have to change this time. So, so let's, let us come back to you with a, a recommendation of how we handle those meetings and the, and the subject matters at that point.
And if the subject matters, you feel, you know...
If they're too much, then maybe we can spark those up.
You need to look at it.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So everybody's okay with that, and that's all we have, so that's, I'm sorry.
I'll cover the obvious with the town hall versus July.
Right. So after the proposed budget is turned in, we will be doing, so town halls, we're looking at an August timeframe, which is good because we're...
Not July?
Yeah, we actually moved, we did, we decided after, after we presented this to...
After you talked.
To, to make it an August timeframe, because then you'll, you will have your proposed budget by then.
Okay.
So we know what we're doing, and, and we'll be basically presenting the proposed budget to the community, unless you all are wanting to change that. And here, getting their input about it, you know, to make, if we want to make changes before the adopted budget, you'll get that input from the community.
You're probably better in August anyways. I'm only for the point of, you'll probably have a lot of residents on vacations and all that stuff. In July, come August, school starts, everybody's back home, everybody's...
That's really, that's a really good idea.
Everybody's back in the neighborhood, so you probably would catch all the locals back home again.
I didn't even think about that, that's great.
Let me just open up for public comment on agenda item fifteen. Here are none, bring it back to the council, just direction, Courtney? Consensus?
Yes.
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, moving on to agenda item sixteen, please take a look at it, proposed March seventh, council agenda. Okay? Thank you. Moving on, Courtney and I need to talk to you about an item for this or the next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Remember, March eighth, seven o'clock, we have our workshop. Moving on to agenda item seventeen, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt admitting minutes from the January seventeenth, twenty eighteen regular meeting and the February seventh, twenty eighteen regular meeting as submitted.
Second, I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilman Brymer. Further discussion? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Ossner?
Yes.
Maricena?
Yes, motion passes. Before we go, one quick thing. We were all from council, copied on an email today, along with council members from Indian Harbor Beach. My recommendation is, I love doing this, talk, call Courtney, on it, just in case you get any further emails on it, I think it'd be worthwhile for that discussion with Courtney.
Okay, can I, a couple of things. I'm, I've got a pension trust fund meeting on the twenty-first, so I won't be able to make that meeting. And the fast trip to Washington in April, I think it's in April or, it's in May. Those dates, I think it's the sixteenth and the seventeenth of, of May. We may want to look at those.
Sixteen?
I'll have to, I, I don't know that it is. I'll have, I got the dates from Allison, she emailed me the dates. I don't have them with me, I didn't write them down, but I'll get them to Courtney to see if we're going to be able to...
Which one is it? What, what?
The fast trip to Washington that the league is doing? I think it's in, I think it is in May.